Good evening and welcome to the Thursday, December 12th, 2019 monthly meeting of the Henrico County Public School Board. Members of the Board, you've seen the agenda and had a chance to review it. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
It's been moved by Reverend Cooper. Is there a second?
Second.
Second is Mrs. Cock. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it, the motion carries. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We will begin this meeting, as we do all of our monthly meetings, with the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence. So if I could ask those with us to please stand for a moment of silence. This can be used by those in attendance for reflection, prayer, or meditation. That concludes our moment of silence. We're now pleased to be able to have some guests from Harvey Elementary School come forward to join us, rather to lead us, as we join them in the Pledge of Allegiance. And Mr. Scott Thorpe is going to introduce our students from Harvey Elementary, who I understand are also joined by Emily Mason, their fourth grade teacher. So, welcome.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, Dr. Cashwell. Tonight it is my pleasure to introduce the following Student Council Advisory members from the Harvey Elementary School. President Ricardo Hutchinson Bennett, Vice President Patrick Cheatham, Secretary Ayana Pinkney, and Treasurer Bobby Gale Nielsen. And as Dr. Cashwell said, our SCA sponsor and fourth grade teacher Emily Mason is here. Harvey Heroes, you're up.
We're going to take a moment to greet the students who just let us in the pledge, so you all may have a seat. And the next item, we'll be joining you there for our performance highlight and some recognitions.
to introduce some guests we have, who will, next school board meeting in January, will be sitting up here, as they'll be taking three of these seats. I believe that they're all here today. They've been here earlier. I think some were able to stay. I hope so. Alicia Atkins from Verona, Marcy Shea from Tuckahoe, and Kristy Kinsella from the Brooklyn District. If they're here, we thank you for staying. Are there, I know some are. They spent the afternoon with us during the work session, and I know that they're still here. And I know that they're excited, and probably almost as excited as Mrs. Cock and I are, for them to join the rest of the other school members and Mr. Pike on the dais next week. So, thank y'all for coming, and thank you for you and the others who participate in the election. Thank you for doing that, and we look forward to many years of your service. So, thank you.[262.14][262.14](Applause).
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, Dr. Cashwell, colleagues, parents, and guests. My name is Christopher Mosley. I am the Education Specialist for Performing Arts. It is my distinct pleasure to introduce for our performance highlight this evening, the Seven Pines Elementary School Fifth Grade Chorus, under the direction of Mrs. Nancy Neshheim. She has taught for 25 years, however, the last six in Henrico County. During her career, she's taught music at the elementary, middle, and high school levels, as well as directing numerous choirs and youth and adult students in teaching piano lessons. She's a graduate of Lenora Ryan University in Hickory, North Carolina. Tonight, we have in attendance their proud principal, Mr. Terry Mothershead. Could you please stand and be recognized?[334.12][334.12](Applause). All right. And now, please help me welcome to our stage the Seven Pines Elementary School Fifth
No rows, sorry. Yes. We're going to take just a couple minutes. As Mr. Montgomery just introduced our incoming school board members, we wanted to take a few minutes to thank our outgoing school board members, who I'm not going to look at, so I don't get emotional. But, anyway, I wanted to just tell you that for the last five years, I've had the pleasure of working with John and with Bev, and for the last 14 months with Bill. And we're just going to say a little bit about each one of them. But next to Bill, I have the best seat in the house, because I've been sitting next to Bill for quite a while. And if you don't know this about Bill, he is generally, you know, really a good writer. And oftentimes, we will get these very lengthy, very thoughtful emails. And so, when we got Bill, who stepped up when he was needed by the Tuckahoe District, he didn't have to do it, but he volunteered after being an administrator for such a long time with the county. And when he stepped up, we got someone with a wealth of experience. And so, I have benefited from sitting next to him and his experience. It has spilled over on me. So, for that, I am truly grateful. Not long ago, the county manager referred to Bev as the anchor of Brooklyn. And that is so true. She has represented, excuse me, the Brooklyn District for eight years on the Board, and did so much in Brooklyn before that. I know she's going to continue to work for Brooklyn and for her little part of Henrico, where she calls home. And the thing you might not know about Bev, I think we all do, is that Bev really knows what is right and wrong for kids. And she does, she has a really good heart for what is the best thing we do for our kids. And so, we're hoping that we can continue that on, since she's not going to be with us. But I'm going to end with John, just real quick. If you've been listening or attending any of our meetings over the last 12 years, since John has been on the Board, you know that he's really good at giving an astute evaluation of any situation. He's really thought, very thoughtful. He can figure stuff out. But Debbie Ward and I kind of call him isms. John has this interesting way of summing things up. So, for example, I've been, yes, taking notes on what John says, so I could tell about him a little bit. But, anyway, he has an interesting take on things. When we were talking about Tucker and the renovation of Tucker, he said that was kind of like putting lipstick on a pig. Very true, actually. And when we were talking about the school calendar, he said that the committee had kind of been chasing their tail a little bit. Things like that, that's what we get from John. But we were approving, at our very last meeting, we were approving a long list of items, and John said, "Yes, sir, yes, sir, three bags full." What that had to do with that long list of items, nobody knows, but it was a full list. But the funniest thing, I think, just recently, we were at the groundbreaking of Tucker, and we're all standing there digging in the dirt, and John said, "Well, when y'all come out to Highland Springs, I'm going to get you to plant corn." You know, it's just stuff like that, that we are all going to remember John for, for a whole lot more, obviously, than that. But it's those funny little things that sometimes can break tension, which is a good thing, but also really sum up in a very interesting and different way. So, John isms, we will miss. But thank you all so much for all you've done for Henrico, for the kids, and for being our working partners. We're going to miss you terribly. So, I'm going to turn it over to our Vice Chair, Reverend Cooper.
Can we give Ms. Ogbrun a hand for that?[916.12][916.12](Applause). So, Ms. Ogbrun had the precious privilege of summarizing you three, and I just have the brief privilege of thanking you on behalf of the citizens of Henrico, whether it was 14 months or 12 years. Oftentimes, it's not the quantity, but it's the quality. So, qualitatively, whether it's been a long time or a short term, the indelible mark that you all have left is the legacy that you leave. And so, we thank you for your stewardship. We thank you for your sacrifice. Thank you for your service. And because of you all, the students, as well as the county, are better because of you. And so, we want to thank you also, Mr. Montgomery, for being our chairman the last year. It's been a pleasure and a privilege to serve as your Vice Chair. Thank you for being late to certain meetings, and I've had to step in for you, because by doing that, I got it wrong every time.[974.12][974.12](Laughter). So, I want to say thank you. But we want to seriously thank you for shepherding the ship, for the great things that have happened this last year, and we're internally grateful. So, we're going to ask our superintendent now to wrap this up and present you all gifts.
All right. Thank you, Reverend Cooper. And I know you just, both, all of you had the opportunity to hear about the three individuals who are departing a little bit individually, but I would want to say collectively, on behalf of the entire school division staff, so as your superintendent on behalf of the staff, I know Reverend Cooper alluded to the entire community who elected you. As a staff, we want to let you know that the legacy that each of you has left on Henrico County Public Schools is a tremendous one. And again, whether your service was for a short time, one term, two terms, three terms or four terms, that service is tremendous. And what you gave of yourselves to be present for each of our schools and for the community is a tremendous gift. And we are so thankful that you chose to share your time and talents with Henrico County, and know that your efforts will not long be forgotten and you will be missed. We're really excited about working with a new board. But as we visit Fairfield Middle and see the Cornerstone Farms, we'll always think of Mr. Montgomery. And no doubt, with a new Holiday Elementary School groundbreaking just tomorrow, and the potential of an immersion program there, Bev, your legacy won't be forgotten in that way, and so many more. And Bill, a number of efforts that you've advocated for when it comes to making sure that we're remembering our teachers, having been a teacher here in Henrico and administrator, and always speaking for the staff and their point of view, your advocacy is so appreciated and won't be forgotten. So, to all of you, from all of us, we thank you so much for your service. You'll be missed.[1092.24][1092.24](Applause).
We're going to speak here, just, we've got some others. So, I ask if we'd have a moment for each of us to have just a chance to speak. I know a lot of folks came here tonight to do things other than listen to us, so we'll be brief. But Mr. Pike, would you begin, please?
You know, this is the last place in the world I expected to be 14 months ago. And I can tell you that it was a real surprise to be selected, to be the Tuckahoe representative, but I've enjoyed every minute of it. And I'd like to thank the superintendent, her staff, and, you know, the school board staff that's here. But there's so many people that work behind the scenes that make a school board and make a school system run. If you're a school bus driver, or you're a custodian, you're a cafeteria worker, bus driver, whatever it may be, all those people that work behind the scenes really make a school system go. And these two ladies up here, and Mr. Anderson, our attorney, so many people, and that's what it really comes down to. Everywhere I've been in my career, I've been fortunate to be surrounded by really terrific people, and that makes all the difference in the world. And, you know, I can't walk away from here without thanking Mickey, and Roscoe, and Bev, and John, and even Lisa Marshall, whose place, whose shoes I attempted to fill. There's no way in the world you could feel Lisa Marshall's shoes and her commitment to the school system. But thank you so much for giving me this opportunity. I will cherish it the rest of my life. And, you know, my wife supports me in so many ways, and so are our kids and grandkids. But, you know, what's really terrific about it is to hear those voices tonight, and the harmony of those voices. And if I had a prayer for a school system, it would be harmony like those voices we heard tonight. Thank you so much for giving me this opportunity.[1238.08][1238.08](Applause).
Well, this week and last has been filled with a huge range of emotions, from elation to bittersweet sadness, and all of that in between. I'm really excited about the new school board. I'm very excited about Dr. Cashwell, being at our helm, and the direction that we are headed in. But I am truly going to miss my colleagues on the school board. In this role, you really become more than colleagues, you become a family. And it's been a wonderful family, being with you all, and with Ms. Marshall, and others that have served throughout the past eight years on the Board as well. And also, I'd like to say that staff, y'all are amazing. And, you know, you make it a direction from five or six people, but it's you all that carry it out. And you do it with love for our children and protection of our teachers, and that is very meaningful. We have a very special thing here, going on here in Henrico County. I've been humbled to represent Brooklyn in many capacities, but this is like the, one of the top culminations that I can ever think of. Next to being the mother of my two girls and married to my husband, this is like the top. And thank you for this experience. You know, I was a Girl Scout leader for 10 years, and the number one rule in our troop, well, actually, it was the number two rule, because the number one rule was, do not embarrass Mrs. Cock. But the second rule was to leave your surroundings better than when you got there. And I have really tried to look at that as a goal for Brooklyn and for Henrico County. And I'm just grateful to be a small part of it. Thank you.[1352.01][1352.01](Applause).
So, I will to tell you how meaningful it was to have Seven Pines here tonight, because that's where my children went to school, and where I first did any service for Henrico County Public Schools, as an eager parent of a kindergartner and a new student there. And I remember, I told the superintendent this, the resource teacher, who is a wonderful lady, Mrs. Debbie Hollerwell, Miss Debbie Hollerwell, who many of you know, who is, who deserves more credit than I could ever give her. But, so I said, "Miss Hollerwell, I'm excited. I want to help, you know, what can I do?" How did I, I was everywhere, I was in her way and everything else. And I said, "Well, what's our fight song here?" And she said, "Oh, Mr. Montgomery, penguins do not fight."[1397.61][1397.61](Laughter). So, I learned quickly that I had to adjust my expectations. But Seven Pines was a great place to begin, and Henrico County Public Schools, and particularly the Board, have been a great place to serve over the past years. I want to, I made a list, because I want to make sure and thank a few people who served with us on the Board. Linda McBride before Bev Cock in the Brooklyn District, in the Fairfield District, it was the incomparable Lamont Bagby, who, a short period of time after him, was Pierre Green, and now, of course, my good friend and colleague Reverend Cooper, who we all have a great deal of respect for. In the Three Top District, Diana Winston served. We came on the Board together. Rob Boils covered a period of time in there, and of course, Mickey has done a tremendous job over the last now, I don't know how many years. I want to say eight, but it seems like two. How's that? I know it's five. But she's done a tremendous job and has brought so much to the Board. And then, in the Tuckahoe District, we, all of us have mentioned a time or two about Lisa Marshall, because of the tremendous person that she was. She's incomparable. And I hope that she knows that our heart, we love her from the depths of our heart, and think greatly of her. And of course, Mr. Pike was able to come in here and do well for us, as well, as you've heard tonight, and he's been a tremendous resource. To staff, as Mrs. Cock said, there's new faces here. There's faces that I've seen, and we've promoted here tonight, throughout, who I've been, had the great opportunity and respect for you and the work that you do, and the punches that you've taken. And we know what I'm talking about. And you keep rolling, and you keep going, and you keep doing your job, and it's been tremendous. And just keep this in mind, if we're taking punches, if you're taking maybe the principal and the teacher or not. So, if that helps you any, I hope it does. And then, to our superintendent, and those who came before her, we did, we got lucky. We selected well. And you are going to be served well for her for years to go. And I want to close with this, and it's probably a little bit different, and it just came to me. So, yesterday afternoon, I got a phone call, as all of us do from time to time, of a grandparent who was a custodian, had custody of a child, very adamant that she wanted her child not in, not just not in the classroom, and the teachers that she had in the fourth grade in one of our elementary schools, but not in that building, and no longer anything to do with those teachers. And so, she spoke about that, and I said, "Well, here's what I ask you to do. Follow up with the principal, and I will follow up with Central Office, and share with them your concerns, so that she can follow up as well." So, I did that with the superintendent and her staff. And she did what she said she was going to do. And so, without any further, other than passing along a message on my part, I got a message here today that said, "Good afternoon. I just want to bring you both into the loop," this was the superintendent, "regarding a meeting this morning with the grandmother." And this is from the principal of the school. "The meeting went well. Parent-teacher concerns were discussed with the student present. Concerns were clarified, explained, and resolved. To conclude the meeting, we established goals and expectations for the remainder of the year, and clarified how things would be communicated between the school and home. Great meeting!"[1594.72][1594.72](Exclamation point). And that had nothing to do with me, other than passing a message. That had to do with you training the people that were there, with the parents, and the grandparent in this case, who was dedicated to finding a good solution for her child, for that administrator, and that teacher, and that school bus driver, and the cafeteria worker, and the custodian, and all of those people that said, "I'm waking up every day to make sure that that child, and all the other children in that building, and all the other students in Henrico County, have a good day." And it was a great meeting. It had nothing to do with me, it had everything to do with all of you. So, thank you for the opportunity over the years.[1631.82][1631.82](Applause).
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the Board, and Dr. Cashwell. It's my pleasure to introduce the 2019 REB Award Grant Winners. Established in 1988, the REB Awards for Teaching Excellence recognizes public school teachers who distinguish themselves by their inspiring classroom performance. The program is based on the belief that positive educational experiences at all levels help children form lifelong habits around learning. Through a nomination process, approximately 15 outstanding teachers representing Chesterfield, Henrico, Hanover, and Richmond City are selected each year to receive cash grants to support their professional learning activities. Award recipients have done such things, such as earn graduate degrees, climb mountains, trace their ancestors, and meet peers from all over the world to reignite their own passions in the classroom. Henrico Public Schools this year had four teachers selected to receive the REB Award Grants, and I believe we have one with us this evening, Kimberly Jackson. Come on up, Kimberly.[1723.82][1723.82](Applause). Kimberly is a kindergarten teacher at Echo Lake Elementary. Kimberly receives $9,000, come on up, Kimberly, to study the animals of the Galapagos, the island's intricate ecosystem, and the importance of reducing the environmental footprints of the island. Also receiving the award, but who were not able to be with us tonight, are three teachers from Glen Allen High School, Caitlin Carpenter, Amanda Hack, and Tim Tozlee. And also not with us, but very important to recognize, Henrico did have three finalists this year, who each received $750. John Larkins from Freeman High School, Kristen Schimmel from Cackley Elementary School, and Luana Wilson from Greenwood Elementary. So, congratulations to all of our teachers, and especially Kimberly, who was able to join us this evening.[1773.01][1773.01](Applause).
Next, we would like to recognize the Helping Hand Volunteer Award Winners. For the month of December, we are catching up on this award, so there- We are catching up on this award, so there are two volunteers of the month, and it's presented to volunteers who make extraordinary contributions to our schools. First, Brandy Yule of Henrico High School. Brandy, if you would, come on up to the front, please. Brandy was nominated by Stephanie Poxon, Director of the Center for the Arts at Henrico High School. And I saw Stephanie here just a second ago. She's right there in the middle of the room. Now, Brandy is president of the Friends of the Center for the Arts at Henrico High School. It's a tremendous job, which Director Stephanie Poxon said, quote, "Could truly be a full-time paid position as opposed to a parent volunteer position." Stephanie said that as president, Brandy manages the committees for the treasury fundraising, food, events, spirit wear, and scholarships. It requires countless hours of coordination, planning, and execution. Under Brandy's guidance, membership has expanded, and the group has been able to purchase new equipment for the center, including new studio lights and a new digital soundboard. Brandy is also coordinating a mental health awareness morning program for center students. "Brandy truly cares about the faculty, staff, and students at the Center for the Arts," said Stephanie. "Whether delivering and serving food to our students before rehearsals or taking home costumes to launder them, no task is too great or too small for Brandy." On behalf of Henrico County Public Schools, thank you so much. Next, may I have Ellis Henderson of Glen Lee Elementary School come to the front. Ellis, welcome in. Ellis was nominated by Kaylee For, third grade teacher. And if Kaylee's here, I haven't seen her this evening, but maybe she's watching like the millions at home on our live stream. Now, Ellis Henderson saw a need at Glen Lee Elementary School and jumped right in. During the 2018-19 school year, Ellis, who is Pastor of the Way of the Lord Fellowship, met each week with groups of Kaylee's students to serve as a mentor and encourage a love of reading. This year, he's working with Kaylee to build a pool of mentors at Glen Lee in pursuit of a broader vision, establishing literacy mentorship programs at more Title I elementary schools. "My students were excited each time he visited and looked forward to reading with him," said Kaylee. "His visits were a powerful tool to get even the most reluctant reader excited to grab a book and join the group. My students built connections with strong, positive role models through literature, and my readers flourished. He even used his personal and business connections to provide every student at Glen Lee with new books at the end of the school year." According to Kaylee, Ellis's vision is to have volunteers working with specific groups of students on a regular basis to build fluency and comprehension through data-driven, literacy-based mentoring. "I'm proud to be working with him on such an endeavor and excited about watching this program grow," said Kaylee. "It takes a village." On behalf of Henrico Schools, Ellis, thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, Dr. Cashwell, colleagues, and guests. Tonight, I have the privilege of helping recognize the Academy at Virginia Randolph for receiving the Five of Five High Performance Award for the Jobs for American Graduates Program. And I have to point out, this is the 12th year they've received this award. I would like to ask Barry Glenn, who is the President and Chief Executive Officer of Jobs for Virginia Graduates, to come forward at this time to make the presentation, along with their business teacher, Mrs. Amy Stills.
I say this every year I've come, and it's 12 out of 15 years that I'm a graduate of Henrico County High Schools, Douglas Freeman. And you need to know, when I travel to state to our 27 school divisions, we have programs in that Henrico has an excellent reputation. And I take full credit for that, obviously. But Amy has been with the program since we started. This is her 12th win. And at your seats, I have this data that we can't go over because y'all are standing there, but that's okay. But I'm going to give the plaque. It says, "The Academy of Virginia Randolph, the National Five of Five Recognition, recognized for outstanding performance and accomplishment exceeding the Five of Five National Performance Goals for the Class of 2018. This was given in Orlando, Florida, July of 2019." I also have a certificate that they made up, the JAG for the classroom. And usually, this goes in the hallway of the schools, you know, lined up, and this goes in the classroom. I also have a banner, yes, that the board makes. And the board, my board director pays for all these things because we feel it's important to honor excellence. And the concept behind this is when she can find some Class of 2018 kids to come back to school and talk to students, they get to sign these. So she has these in her classroom. And at your desk, there's a copy of our connection, which Amy did for us for nothing, for years. And you are featured on page three, Amy, and also, the program is featured on page 11. So if you have a chance, glance through that. The stats are the most important thing that I'm going to talk about tonight, because we have a new data person, and they talk about the barriers. I don't think the average person knows the barriers kids in high school have these days. But in her class, to highlight a few of them, 96% of her students, when she got them, didn't pass the state proficiency exam. 54% had been suspended. 88% economic disadvantage on TANF. 65 repeated a grade. 46 lived with a single parent or a foster parent or a relative. And over, almost 60% of low academic performance. 93% graduated. In fact, the Academy of Virginia Randolph exceeded the national five standards in every single one of them, and actually outperformed the state average in three. It's phenomenal job that Amy does, and these kids, I know, appreciate it, and I appreciate what she does. Thank you. And last thing I'm going to say is, this is my last meeting because I'm retiring, thank goodness. I talked about going to Freeman's when dinosaurs roamed the earth, but it's been the best thing I've done in my career. And I had national training last week. I don't know why they trained me, I'm getting to retire, but I thought you might want to hear this. Princeton University did a study on job creation across the country, because jobs for Virginia graduates is what we do. School to graduation to work. From 2005 to 2015, 94% of the jobs created were part-time, contracting, gig economy, as opposed to nine-to-five traditional jobs. 94%. For that same period, jobs for America's graduates, jobs, 70% were full-time employment rate. That's an amazing statistic. That's what we get our students to do. Find a career-based job and take advantage of the advantages of that. Access to jobs is much more these days, but a good, solid, full-time job with benefits is really hard to find. And I'm proud of what we do, and I hope you're proud of our program. Thank you for having me.
It is my pleasure to introduce the new Chief of School Leadership, Dr. Ingrid Grant. Dr. Grant earned her Bachelor of Arts degree in exceptional education and specific learning disabilities from Bethune-Cookman College in Daytona Beach, Florida. Two years later, she earned her Master's Degree in Adult Education and Administration from Florida A&amp;M in Tallahassee, Florida. It would be a decade later when she earned her post-Master certification in Administration and Supervision from Virginia Commonwealth University. Dr. Grant started her career as an adult basic education teacher at a maximum-security prison, but soon transitioned to be an exceptional education teacher in Jackson County Public Schools. 24 years ago, thank goodness, Dr. Grant moved to Henrico County to teach exceptional education students at Ridge Elementary, and then transitioned to Wilder Middle School. Her leadership skills were evident early in her career, and she was tapped to become the Assistant Principal at New Bridge School, an alternative school for elementary and middle school students right here in this building. Her first principalship was at Laburnum Elementary, where she moved the school to full accreditation in her first year. Eventually, she was moved to Ratcliffe Elementary, where she again moved the school to full accreditation in the first year. Her success in these two schools led to her being named the Director of School Improvement in 2013, and a year later, was named the Director of Middle School Education, a position she currently holds. Dr. Grant also serves as the lead school-level director, sitting on the division leadership team. And as a result of her work in Henrico County, Dr. Grant has received numerous honors, including the following. In 2009, she was designated as Henrico's REB Award for Distinguished Educational Leadership Award winner. In 2018, Dr. Grant was Henrico's Instructional Leader of the Year. And this past summer, Dr. Grant was appointed by Governor Northam to Virginia's first African-American Advisory Board. Please join me in congratulating Henrico's Chief of School Leadership, Dr. Ingrid Grant.
Dr. Cashwell, members of the board, thank you for this honor. I'm grateful. Dr. Tygen, thank you for your support for the last four years since you've been in Henrico County. I greatly appreciate all your support. I look forward to working collaboratively with all school-level directors and principals, ensuring that K-12 is in alignment, in addition to making sure that we build a culture of excellence in all of our schools in Henrico County Public Schools. So thank you. I'm grateful. I have with me tonight my two daughters, Sakani Grant. Sakani is a seventh-grade history teacher at Elko Middle School. And my daughter, Alana, she just got home this week. This is her last year in school. She's a forensic chemistry major at Virginia State University. Girls, I'm proud of you, and thank you for all your support, because you all sacrificed a lot for me to do what I've done over the last 24 years. And two other ladies, literally, Eliza Cook, please stand. Eliza has been with me since Wilder for over 20 years. She was my instructional assistant when I was an exceptional ed teacher. When I became a principal, she was my, she started off as my attendance secretary, then my secretary, and then moved with me to my next school as my secretary. And now she's at Central Office with me as my administrative assistant. I think sometimes my girls might love her more than they love me because she made sure I got to places on time for them. And another, Mrs. Davis. Ms. Davis just retired last year from Laburnum Elementary as the secretary, but she also worked with me at Ratcliffe Elementary and Laburnum Elementary. And these ladies have been my support throughout the years here in Henrico, being that I have, it's just my daughters and I here in Henrico. So I appreciate all of you for supporting me over these years. Thank you.
For the next item, and it was certainly a pleasure to honor our outgoing board members' promotions, to get to have a performance highlight as well this evening. And for the next item, I am pleased to share highlights from the past month in Henrico County. So if you would, direct your attentions to the screen, and you will see why geography is the sweetest subject, and how our equity ambassadors are making the holiday memorable, and why dancing dinosaurs took over one of our high schools. Enjoy.
As the calendar year comes to an end and schools prepare for winter break, exciting lessons continue to engage students all over Henrico County. Let's start at Marina Elementary, where students were helping our furry friends as they built and decorated dog houses as a community service project. It was truly a sweet review of geography at Harvey Elementary. Students used candy to represent land masses on maps, complete with chocolate chip mountains and rivers of licorice. At Glen Allen Elementary, third graders took a more high-tech approach as they created interactive maps using the software Scratch. A STEAM lesson on oceans came with a challenge at Highland Springs Elementary. Students worked in groups to build boats that would successfully support their popsicle-stick passengers. Students at Greenwood Elementary took their class on the road as they visited the Academy at Virginia Randolph. They observed career and technical education classes and learned how important math skills are for welding. To better understand the Earth's surface, students at Hermitage High School used stacking cups to represent the different layers of rock. Financial skills were the focus at Brooklyn Middle. Students participated in the Real Money, Real World simulation, which assigns students an occupation and has them make a budget based on that job's earning potential. Over at Godwin High School, drama students challenged their memories as they attempted to arrange lines from a Shakespeare play in proper order. The marketing class at Glen Allen High School had a different sort of challenge. Using Legos, they needed to create a new toy and promote it to a specific consumer group. It was a birthday celebration at Henrico High School. After reading the book, 11 AP English students threw a party for the character Rachel, complete with dancing dinosaurs. The Center for the Arts at Henrico High School got a Broadway visit. Cast members from the show Hamilton came by and spoke with the students. One of them even demonstrated the choreography while the students perfectly provided the Just this month, it was my honor to be the first guest at the inaugural Fairfield Forum. This new event invites community leaders to meet with middle school students each month. I was impressed with the insightful questions about leadership and excellence. Safety patrols have a new look at Chamberlain Elementary. Their school counselor celebrated her birthday by collecting and handing out reflective ski gloves to the student volunteers. At Springfield Park Elementary, students were excited to bring canned goods and vote for their turkey queen. Proceeds benefited the Henrico Christmas Mother. Eventually, those donations made their way to our warehouse, where I had the opportunity to sort cans and organize food and presents with the help of our student equity ambassadors who represent all of our high schools. This amazing program would not be possible without the generosity of our students, families, and schools. Earlier today, I had the privilege of presenting the Henrico Christmas Mother with a donation check from the staff at Central Office, while students from Arthur Ashe Elementary serenaded the crowd with holiday songs. And finally, schools from all over the county are showcasing their talents with amazing holiday programs and performances.
Certainly been a busy month in Henrico Schools. Hope you enjoyed those highlights. Mr. Chairman, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you very much, Madam Superintendent. The next item on our agenda is the reading of the mission, and I'm going to take the liberty to do that. So Henrico County Public Schools, an innovative leader in educational excellence, will actively engage our students in diverse educational, social, and civic learning experiences that inspire and empower them to become contributing citizens. Thank you. I hope that that will continue to guide our work. I hope that that will continue to guide our work. And the next item is the public forum, and we have a number of folks signed up, so let me kind of tell you how things are going to go, and then we'll get to that list. This is a time where citizens are invited to address the school board on any matter of concern about the school division. Some citizens have signed up in advance, and we will follow that list first. We will then allow anyone else who wishes to speak to come to the podium to do so after we've completed that list. We ask that each speaker come to the microphone and clearly state your name, neighborhood, or school affiliation. Once you've finished speaking, if you did not sign up in advance, we ask that you write your name and contact information on the signup form that's located on the table behind the microphone against that wall. To assist you in tracking your time, there's a timekeeping system on the podium. Speakers will have a four-minute time limit. The light will be green as you begin your remarks. The yellow light means you have one minute remaining, and we ask that you promptly stop when the light turns red in recognition and respect of the other speakers. The school board is here tonight to hear from you, the community. Speakers should speak directly to the board and address your comments to the board. We will not be responding to speakers. However, someone from staff may follow up with you. We appreciate your attendance here this evening and providing your input. So, as I mentioned, we have 18 speakers. So, what I'm going to do is call the first speaker and ask the second speaker... I'll call their name too, and just ask them to move to the front row so we can keep things moving along. Our first speaker is Mac Ross. Mac will be followed up by Brian Hinx. I hope I've done that correctly. And if I mispronounce your name, I'll apologize in advance. So, Mr. Ross?
All right. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Cashwell, board members-elect, and guests, my name is Mac Ross. I live in the Cross Keys neighborhood. Cross Keys is like the Valparaiso of the NCAA tournament. We are the perennial bubble neighborhood. With each redistricting and each map within those processes, we're either in or out depending on the day, only to find out on Selection Sunday whether we're secure at our neighborhood schools. When John Vatolakis was elevated to our county manager, he said, quote, "The manner in which our employees meet our customers' needs daily, consistently, over time defines us." He further stated that he has, quote, "witnessed many examples of our employees going beyond the ordinary, acts that can only be defined by an all-hands-on-deck approach, acts of bravery and personal sacrifice, acts within our general government, in our schools, that are based on a principle of love of man and love of neighbor, acts that define a community," end quote. Mr. Vatolakis was defining what he refers to daily, and you all know, as the Henrico Way. Henrico doesn't need to rely on outside consultants. Did you know at least seven different county agencies have GIS programmers who together produce a high-tech interactive data mapping system? It rivals any locality in the country. There are county planners that guide and oversee the building of Short Pump, White Oak, Rocket's Landing. As one of only 16 triarc-accredited agencies in the world, yes, I said the world, our police division has traffic crash experts who can tell you where, why, and how traffic crashes affect commuters and safety. Just shy of 4,000 teachers, put every one of our kids' education first every day. We have citizens willing to volunteer their expertise to fix a problem. Every one of these folks would do anything to complete this redistricting process. That, ladies and gentlemen, is the Henrico Way, the love of neighbor and community. It was indeed Matthew Cropper who told everyone at Wilder and Godwin that a student should not be affected by redistricting more than once. That makes it all the more concerning when at last week's elementary committee meeting, Matthew Cropper was asked for a list of neighborhoods affected by previous redistrictings. He answered by saying, "That was 10 years ago, so those students aren't affected, and the families' households are irrelevant." Please take note of the word "irrelevant." That's how a consultant employed by Henrico described your constituents again this past Monday when he uttered the same answer to the same question from the secondary committee, that families and households are irrelevant. Members of the board and members-elect, is that what Henrico County is to you, irrelevant families and household? We all know the answer is an emphatic no. Every correspondence or robo-call from our great principal, Dr. Slaughter, starts off the same way. Hello, Short Pump families. That's what our schools are made of, and that is who your constituents are, families. And what they are not is irrelevant. Matthew Cropper said it twice, so it was not lost in translation nor a misstatement. It's time to call this train wreck what it is, an expensive lesson, and more so, members of the board, it's time for us to wish Matthew Cropper well in his future endeavors and let Cropper GIS go. How can one out-of-state consultant divide this community and pit neighborhood against neighborhood the way it has gone so far? As Ms. Cancela, Ms. Shea, and Ms. Atkins are installed as the newest members of our board, it's time for this new body, along with our veteran members, Reverend Cooper and Ms. Ogburn, to say what we are all screaming from this podium. We learned some lessons from Cropper. Thank you for your assistance, but we got this from here on out. We are not going to do this the Ohio Way. We're going to do it the Henrico Way. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. Our next speaker is Mr. Brian Hinx. Hinx, I'm sorry, Mr. Hinx, and he will be followed by Yale Levin. I'm no doubt mispronouncing these names, and I apologize.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Cashwell, good evening. Roughly one year ago, my wife and I made the collective decision to join the 341 students and families of one of the most diverse elementary schools in the West End of Henrico. A school where half of the population is non-white, speaks more than 14 different languages, and represents 40 different nationalities and cultures. A school where nearly half of the students receive a free or reduced lunch, and has food drives to help fill the pantries of our population so they don't go hungry. A school that holds an annual function called International Night, where we come together to learn more about each other and celebrate our differences. Now, some may think it's hard to believe that such a diverse entity exists in the West End of Henrico, but I'm speaking of Crestview Elementary. A school that for decades has followed a well-established feeder pattern and has sent its graduates to populate the classrooms and halls of Tucker Middle and Freeman High, and contributed to the understanding of what diversity means in this world that we ask our children to face. Put aside for a moment the fact that one of the proposed options puts the entirety of Crestview's population at Tucker. Rather, let's focus on the fact that none of the goals and none of the guidelines are being followed by putting Crestview's population into Tucker. Let me say that again. None of the goals that you, the board, have set forth, and none of the guidelines that Henrico has published are being followed when you take 350 students out of Crestview and place them into Tucker. Now, you could probably argue back and forth very valid points as to what constitutes a natural boundary, or who could walk to school and who can't, what optimum school utilization percentages are, or the safest route a bus could take to school. But what you can't argue is the continued need for diversity in our schools. And what you can argue is the fact that the Crestview population, for decades, has brought much-needed diversity to Freeman High, and if placed at Tucker, increases rather than decreases pockets of poverty at one location, rather than carrying on a long-established and successful feeder pattern that provides a valuable life lesson to Freeman students. A little over 10 years ago, the school board was faced with this very same scenario, the rezoning of Crestview to Freeman, or to Tucker. I don't know how many of you on the board sat during that time, but that board saw the value of diversity by keeping Crestview as a feeder to Freeman, along with the numerous other issues associated with such a move. My only ask to you, along with your successors, is to consider what Freeman becomes without Crestview, and recognize the value that diversity plays as part of this redistricting exercise. Keep diversity at Freeman, and keep Crestview at Freeman. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Yale Levin, I hope I did that well, followed by Heather Walker. Heather Walker, if you would come down as well. Thank you.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak before you tonight. Reverend Cooper, Mazel tov on your engagement. My name is Yale Levin Sheldon, and I live in Greenwood Glen. We are currently zoned for Greenwood Elementary, Hungary Creek Middle, and Glenn Allen High. I have a 7th grader at Hungary Creek and a 5th grader at Greenwood Elementary. Our neighborhoods, Greenwood Glen, Magnolia Ridge, and River Mill, have submitted our feedback via the general feedback form and the survey. We have shown you our petition that lists how the current options violate the guidelines this board has set forth for this process. The current options not only do not meet the goals set forth, but they make our schools less diverse racially and socio-economically. In spite of all of our feedback, no changes have been suggested to the maps to keep us at our current schools, even though Hungary Creek Middle is most likely the middle school that will be expanded. Several of us observed the December 4th Elementary Committee meeting and the December 9th Secondary Committee meeting. I personally observed the Secondary Committee meeting Monday evening, and I would like to share my observations. I saw committee members that appeared frustrated. I saw committee members suggest significant changes to the maps based on public feedback and new data, and Mr. Cropper dismissed these. I saw one committee member try to present alternative maps. Mr. Cropper discouraged him from doing so and from trying to influence other committee members. He was the only committee member that had the courage to say that well-performing schools can handle higher capacity, while struggling schools should remain below capacity. That committee member is a teacher at Glenn Allen High School, so he is more than qualified to make such a statement. I saw another committee member ask Mr. Cropper to see data showing which neighborhoods were impacted in the redistricting two years ago and 10 years ago. Mr. Cropper dismissed her request. Some committee members expressed that they should really just worry about the West End situation because those were the loudest objections. Are we to understand from this that we need to be loud to be heard? Should we not stick with data, facts, and common sense? I saw committee members suggest starting fresh to take into account public feedback and updated data. Mr. Cropper kept dismissing her, saying it was best practice to build off of the maps he provided the committee. Those maps were Mr. Cropper's goal for the new boundaries rather than current school boundaries, and therefore did not allow room for committee members to have an unbiased start. Committee members were only given 20 minutes to work on map changes, and we do not believe those changes to be anything more than cosmetic changes. Lastly, Mr. Cropper said that the survey responses were just a tool. It makes us feel that all of our public input isn't being considered. We recognize that the committee members are volunteers, and we appreciate their many hours of hard work. We also understand that we, the taxpayers of Henrico County, are paying the company of Mr. Cropper over $200,000 for this work, and he seems eager to want to move on to his next project. Let's let him do that. When we look at the numbers and consider that Hungary Creek Middle School will be expanded, it is clear that our three neighborhoods can and should remain at our current schools. It makes no sense to separate such a small percentage of our students from their peers when the enrollment trends for our current schools are declining and our middle school is being expanded due to being slightly over capacity. Thank you and have a good night.
Thank you, ma'am. So, our next speaker is Ms. Walker, followed by Aiden Sheldon.
Oh, he's not coming.
Oh, Sheldon's not going to miss...
My little one, he'll come in January.
Okay, good, good. We look forward to it. All right. And then Liam Sheldon, neither the Sheldon... Okay, all right, all right. Well, let's see about this next one then. Sanuthi... Sanuthi? Yeah, thank you. Will you help me with your last name when you come forward? Just have a seat, and we'll get you next. I'm sorry. Please.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Dr. Cashwell, members of the school board, members of the school board-elect who are here tonight. My name is Heather Walker. I live in Greenwood Glen subdivision, which is near 295 and Woodman Road. Our neighborhood was built 20 years ago with Magnolia Ridge, which is very close by. We're deeply invested in our schools, Greenwood Elementary, Hungary Creek, and Glenn Allen, and have built our community through them. Our two established neighborhoods, along with the new development nearby, have been shifted to Brooklyn Middle and Hermitage High on every map presented. I think we're nearing six, close to eight, actually, of those. We seem to be the largest landmass area that is being moved in this redistricting process. Moving our neighbors... Excuse me. Moving our neighborhoods separates our children from the community they have built at Greenwood Elementary at the most vulnerable school transition in the K-12 continuum, which is the 5th to 6th grade transition. As an educator, I can confidently say that's the hardest one. We do not have adequate representation in this process right now. As far as the redistricting committees go, we had 20 applicants from our neighborhoods, and only one was chosen and then placed at the elementary committee. We have no one on the secondary committee who brings up our concerns. I've been to every committee meeting since October and can attest that our concerns are not discussed, no matter how much detail and data-driven feedback we try to submit. There is no one at the table who understands the unique and beautiful diversity and contributions of our group of homes and families. There is no one in a position to thoughtfully advocate or problem-solve for us. Since October, I have attended every secondary committee meeting, both walkthroughs and spoken to you all each month. Tonight, I'm missing a family event at my boys' school because I need you to hear how frustrated and disheartened I am. At the secondary committee this week, it was said that the addition that is currently recommended for Hungary Creek won't be official until the spring when you all vote on it, and that both that addition and the new elementary school are slated to open in 2022. Those two factors alone are reason enough to delay this redistricting. Tucker and Highland Springs are adding so few seats that although they are new, having them ready in 2021 does not greatly affect the redistricting process. The committee members seem to feel rushed as they ask about creating new maps and for numbers to be run for their new ideas. It makes no sense to me that this is happening right now. What's the rush? Please seriously consider putting it on hold for a year. New school board members will have had time to get to know and understand the needs of their communities. The new addition at Hungary Creek, assuming that's approved, and the new elementary school will have a more concrete timeline, making them a viable part of the planning and decision-making. Committee members should have the option to stay on board for the record because part of their concern was, oh, my gosh, we've spent this many hours. And they... I admire them so much, and I'm so grateful for what they've done. They should be able to stay on if they choose. Either way, this needs to wait. Oh, I should add, and we need a member on that committee, please. This needs to wait so that we aren't here again in three to five years. Continuity is essential for community building, and constant Band-Aids and changes disrupt that continuity. Children create their own community within their schools as they learn to be social creatures, not just in their neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker, please, and please tell me how to pronounce your last name.
It's Nanaya Kara.
Okay, thank you so much. And she will be followed by Ashley Lewis, please. So, please begin when you're ready.
Okay. Hello, my name is Sanuthi, and I'm from Magnolia Ridge. I have a few concerns with the redistricting as someone who is going to be starting 10th grade in 2021, when this all happens. I have a few problems that I'm sure other people my age and will be able to relate with me, even if they change the year they do the redistricting. 9th grade is when you make your friend groups. You find people who have similar interests with you, and you also keep your friends from middle school. By switching us and moving us to 10th grade in Hermitage, you're separating us from our friends, people that in school have already found... People in that school have already found their friend groups, and we will be behind since it's only us. We will be separated by our classes, so that's even... So, we'll be even more lonely. And it will be the same no matter what. So, if you're going to redistrict us, please consider us giving the 10th... Please consider giving the 10th graders the grandfather. And if you decide not to redistrict us, because... Please decide not to redistrict us because even the people who have been here in our neighborhoods for a while deserve to stay with our friends. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And Ms. Lewis, yes, thank you. Will be followed... Ms. Lewis will be followed by Ryan Burgess, please.
Good evening. My name is Ashley Lewis, and I live in River Mill. I'm very concerned with the lack of response to the strong opposition to this redistricting. Residents of Henrico County have been voicing opposition from many neighborhoods, and none of it is being considered. Why did Henrico County hire an out-of-town company to complete this redistricting? Was it to pass the buck and never own responsibility of this huge debacle? There's only... There's going to be three new board members who just recently finished their campaigns for... their campaigns for election. It is not right to expect them to be able to make such a huge decision in just under five months. Has anyone spoken to or consulted with the teachers or principals yet? When I last spoke, I provided you direct information from the Brooklyn Middle School principal stating that he needed more resources to handle his current capacity. Therefore, we should not be adding more without providing that. Which brings me to my next concern, teacher resource availability and pay, or lack thereof. Over $200,000 of our tax money is going towards someone who is poorly handling redistricting responsibilities. Teachers really could benefit from that over $200,000 in either form of increasing their pay or adding resources to help them better educate the students. We live in northwestern Henrico, the furthest away from other communities and schools. Our neighborhoods were just in a similar undesirable position in 2017. Now here we are again. We can almost always expect to be on the chopping block in every future redistricting because of this, which is unfair to our children to constantly shuffle them around every two to three years because Henrico County just won't build the much-needed new schools to alleviate overcrowding. It feels like racial diversity is being pushed out of Hungary Creek Middle School and Glen Allen High School. I truly hope it is not to alleviate unrealistic concerns that we will wreck those schools. The great diversity and strong academic performance both schools, make both of these schools desirable. Taking away that diversity does nothing but further segregate and intensify poverty concentrations in already high-poverty-stricken schools. With the great opposition from communities, new board members, and noted frustration among committee members, this redistricting really needs to be tabled and revisited once additions to schools are completed, new schools are finalized, and board members are well-acclimated to all facts of this proposal. The county currently looks like they don't know what they're doing. As Oprah Winfrey once said, "When you don't know what to do, do nothing." Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ryan Burgess, followed by Janine Chuning, please.
Good evening, members of the school board, Dr. Cashwell, colleagues, and community stakeholders. My name is Ryan Burgess, and this is my 16th year teaching in Henrico County. I'm currently a teacher and HEA member at Highland Springs High School, and I would like to address you tonight on several systemic issues across the county. I am a highly educated, trained professional with graduate degrees in history and social work. As a teacher, every year it seems that the demands of my job increase while the financial compensation and time allotted stay the same. This year, the demands in Henrico have been particularly crushing. I am not here to complain or offer excuses. I am a dedicated teacher who loves their job and works hard to meet the ever-increasing requirements of my position. I am simply here to explain the realities of that experience. This year has been quite different from other years. Everyone knows teachers are busy. We construct our lesson plans and materials, teach, grade, and assess our students, communicate with parents, and pursue professional development. However, this year we are being told to record our lesson plans weekly, to increase the number of grades we record per marking period, to administer grade and track student growth measures, benchmarks, and performance task data. We teach digital citizenship lessons and the HLP and deeper learning model. On a weekly basis, we compare strand data, track Tier 1 to 3 students, record parent phone calls in a spreadsheet, complete nine-page Google forms for one disciplinary referral. Within all of this, we are expected to be on pace and to respond properly to numerous emails, phone calls, and Google form surveys. That's over 20 items that we are required to complete in addition to our job teaching the children of Henrico County in our one hour and a half planning blocks. I am also trying to teach my students. I work very hard to meet the needs of every learner through engaging lessons, attending INP meetings, spending many hours on professional learning activities, following IEPs to the letter, meeting ESL accommodations, buying copy paper to supplement the one box of paper we are given a semester, as well as other resources, and by being a supportive listener, mentor, counselor, and historical expert. Again, I love my job, our vision as a district, and the work I do. I would, however, like to be free to do my job without unreasonable constraints. Please trust me to do my job. The red tape and the meaningless, time-consuming bureaucratic paperwork and data-driven activities need to abate, or we need to be given more time and financial compensation to do them. As administrators and school board members, please work with us and not against us to help us do our jobs. As education historian and scholar Diane Ravitch stated, "You don't improve education by demoralizing the people who have to do the work every day." I'd just like to close by saying that we can do incredible things in Henrico County as teachers, but we can't do them when we're buried under paperwork. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Burgess. Thank you. Simone Robinson, would you come forward, please, after Janine? Simone Robinson, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Cashwell, guests, colleagues. My name is Janine Chuning. I am the president of the Henrico Education Association, and I'm speaking for myself and my colleagues. But first, I'd like to thank the outgoing members of the board, Mrs. Cock, Mr. Montgomery, and Mr. Pike. Thank you very much for helping us advance our mission to make teaching learning in Henrico County the best it can be. Thank you for listening to us and being available to us when we needed you over the years. We really appreciated it. But I'm here to reiterate what Ryan said. Teachers are suffering. We are stressed. We are maxed out. And the sentiments I'm sharing tonight are modeled after remarks made by Sojourner Truth, an abolitionist and feminist who delivered her famous speech, "Ain't I a Woman?" in 1851. That man over there says teachers don't have a plan unless he sees a plan, graphed and charted, with color-coded columns and SOL numbers and letters, clothing each standard like a prison uniform. Nobody ever asks if these lesson plans help my students, or make me better, or mean anything at the end of the day. Ain't I a teacher? Look at me. Look at my face, laugh lines and frown lines coexisting, a testimony to every achievement and failure in my classroom. I've spent years with a pen in my hand, blue, pink, green, purple, never red, commenting and grading, and hoping each word will get them one step closer. I have counseled and cried and consoled hundreds, and no lesson plan can account for it. Ain't I a teacher? I could write more lesson plans, crank them out on the conveyor belt of public education, and smother the anger all the while. And ain't I a teacher? I've taught over 2,000 students and seen many of them raise families, start businesses, publish books, become CEOs. None because of a lesson plan I submitted. And ain't I a teacher? Thank you.
And after Ms. Robinson, Sanab Bowens? I know I did that wrong. Go ahead, please.
Good evening, members of the board, and thank you so much again for listening to me again this evening. I promised not to take up any space in January. I'm also helping, hoping that by January, our voices will truly be heard. In the time since I've been here last, I've seen and heard some of our voice seemingly being diminished, from comments that have seemed to disappear to the way that Cropper's delivered the concerns to the hard-working committee members who are working on our behalf. To me, that is unseemly. It is magnified when this process that has received so much opposition is not realistically reconsidered, reworked, and then considered again, for it is our very smallest stakeholders who have to worry about the redistricting, more than parents, more than teachers, more than any of you guys, more than any of the folks sitting here, more than newspapers. They have to bear the burden of a rushed process. Also, we've already heard about the $230,000. That seems like a whole lot of money. You've heard it three times, and you heard it when I walked in the door. I won't even bother to belabor, belabor that point. But I am asking that we take a beat, that you consider taking a moment for something that is so important, again, to our smallest stakeholders, that we really reconsider and consider, and then consider again, what we're asking them to do, to leave their communities, to go into a new community. We're asking them to bear the brunt of loneliness. We're asking them to reform communities, and yes, children are resilient, but adults should be measured. And in this instance, it doesn't seem as though we are using all of our voices to reconsider what has received so much opposition. Like I said, I won't take up too much of your time, and I promise, can't promise my son won't be here, but I won't be speaking in January. So again, thank you so much for listening.
Thank you, ma'am. After Ms. Bowens, our next speaker will be Chandler Cox.
Good evening. My name is Zainab Yusofi Bowens, and I live in River Mill, and Greenwood is our elementary school. I'm a single mother of a rising kindergartner. I migrated to America from the Middle East in 1982. Shortly thereafter, my young mother abandoned our family and left my blue-collar father to raise two very young children in a brand-new country where we knew no one and did not know the language. We grew up very poor in Virginia Beach, however, we were lucky in that we happened to be one of the lower-class neighborhoods districted for highly-rated public schools that consisted of predominantly high-achieving students. Because of this opportunity and a great education, I made it into college and have since made a career and life for myself. I spent most of my adult life living in the city of Richmond. I struggled to get where I am today and am fortunate to have been able to recently purchase a townhome in River Mill in Glen Allen. The main reason I purchased in River Mill was to afford my daughter the opportunity to attend the schools we are currently zoned for, Greenwood Elementary, Hungary Creek Middle, and Glen Allen High School. Today, I am speaking for River Mill, Greenwood Glen, and Magnolia Ridge. Both redistricting options have us moving to Brooklyn Middle and Hermitage High. We ask that you delay this redistricting at least for the Fairfield-Glen Allen area for the following reasons. The new River Mill Elementary School will be ready in the fall of 2022. We should wait until we see how that will impact feeder patterns. Second point, the Hungary Creek Middle School expansion of 200 new seats will be ready in the fall of 2022. That should suffice to accommodate keeping our neighborhoods at Hungary Creek. Our three neighborhoods together will have a total of only 206 middle school students, most of whom are already attending Hungary Creek and are already accounted for capacity-wise. In addition, enrollment trends for Hungary Creek and Glen Allen High School are decreasing. The proposals have us moving to Brooklyn Middle School and Hermitage High School, but more than 500 units by Telegraph Road called Retreat at One are being built and zoned for Brooklyn and Hermitage. That alone could put Brooklyn over capacity when it is an already struggling school and will greatly increase capacity at Hermitage, which is also struggling academically. Keeping our three neighborhoods at our current schools will help alleviate increased enrollment trends for Brooklyn Middle School and Hermitage High School. We, River Mill, Greenwood Glen, and Magnolia Ridge, are the diversity at our current schools. Both Option A and B fail to fulfill the county's goal of creating an equitable balance between all the schools in the county. Instead, under both options, Hungary Creek Middle School would lose approximately 13% of its economically disadvantaged students, and its demographic would skew from medium poverty to low poverty. It would also become less racially diverse, losing about 6% of its African-American student population. Under both options, Glen Allen High School would lose more associate economic equity, and both economically disadvantaged, disadvantaged and African-American students would be grossly underrepresented in the student body. We feel that there is an effort to make Hungary Creek and Glen Allen whiter and more affluent by pushing out our racially and economically diverse neighborhoods. Thank you for letting me speak today.
Thank you. Thank you. Our next speaker is Chandler Cox, will be followed by Jeff Britt.
Hello, my name is Chandler Cox, and I'm in 5th grade at Greenwood Elementary School. I live in Magnolia Ridge. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak this evening. I would like for the board to please reconsider redistricting our neighborhood from Hungary Creek Middle and Glen Allen High. I want to continue middle school with all my friends. If we are redistricted, I will only have a couple of friends going with me, and Brooklyn Middle is a huge school. In addition, it is not fair that I would have to start middle school twice as I would be going, as I would be doing 6th grade at Hungary Creek and then having to start again at Brooklyn Middle. Middle school is scary, and starting it twice is much scarier. I would like to add that right now, we get visits from Hungary Creek and Glen Allen High students. They are acting as our mentors. We don't know anyone at Brooklyn and Hermitage. Thank you and good night.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jeff Britt, who will be followed by Josh Gresenbach. Gresenbach, Gresenbach.
Good evening. Jeff Britt, live in the Pinedale Farms neighborhood in the West End. I'm here tonight on more, on behalf of more than 600 residents that have signed a petition to keep the Pemberton Corridor at Freeman High School. There are eight neighborhoods along Pemberton Road that are impacted, about 130 high school-age kids. Both options being considered would move our students to Tucker High School, and we're fighting to stay at Freeman. I attended the secondary committee meeting Monday night, too, and left incredibly discouraged about this entire redistricting process. Mostly, I was discouraged at how the committee seemed to care very little about the volumes of public comment received at recent meetings and through the online survey. Matt Cropper did give a PowerPoint presentation with a summary of results, but there's no way the committee was able to digest all that information and then jump right into making, marking up maps. But they did anyway. It didn't appear the committee gave much mind to any of the hotspots, as we've been referred to as, or the fact that the majority of survey respondents dislike or oppose both options. 55% dislike or oppose Option A, and 75% of respondents dislike or oppose Option B. The survey results are pretty compelling. There is widespread opposition to these maps that arbitrarily move thousands of students for the sake of moving students. There was one committee member who spoke up and suggested a guiding principle of their work should be to limit student disruption. He clearly had looked at the data and considered public feedback because he showed up having developed his own maps that minimized the movement of students unnecessarily. It kept communities like Rain Tree and Church Run and the Pemberton Corridor at their current high schools. Of course, his logic was immediately shot down. Several committee members seemed offended that he had taken the initiative to create his own maps. They also questioned his rationale to limit student disruption. One committee member actually said, and I quote, "Why can't we move kids around? That's why we're here." Unbelievable. Is that really the point of all this? To move kids for the sake of moving kids? That was my takeaway from being at that meeting on Monday night. There was also a committee member who brought up hearing from several people that some areas of the county have been rezoned as recently as 10 years ago. Yeah, that's us. The Pemberton Corridor was rezoned last time, and kids were moved from Godwin to Freeman. Now, if we are moved again, Tucker would be our third high school in just 10 years. This lady asked Cropper for data to know how many areas have been moved in recent years. He dismissed the notion and said it doesn't matter. High school lasts three to five years. Not many students will be impacted by moving again. Really? Because I've lived along Pemberton Road for 10 years, and this is my third redistricting fight. I have four kids who will be in school over a nine-year stretch. It does matter to me, and it does have an impact. I can think of a dozen other families in my neighborhood that would be impacted and split by this decision. I'm sorry to take up time tonight speaking on redistricting. It's not on the agenda, but I couldn't speak at the committee meeting the other night. So I'm here tonight, and I'm telling you, the process is flawed. The committee is misguided. We're moving too fast. The committee is making uninformed arbitrary decisions that will impact thousands of students and their families. We can do better. We need your leadership. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Josh Gresenbach. I may have the wrong. Is Josh here? All right, then. then Jennifer Andrews, who will be followed by Melinda, Mrs. Handwritten, Winterhalter? Oh, okay, good.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the school board, Dr. Cashwell, colleagues and guests. Jennifer Andrews, Henrico resident and teacher, speaking on behalf of the Henrico Education Association. Since this is the last monthly meeting of the current term for school board members, we want to express our appreciation to you for all the hard work you put into serving Henrico as school board members. I know most people have no idea how much you actually do. Mrs. Augburn and Reverend Cooper, you will be returning to your seats in January. Mr. Montgomery, Mrs. Koch, and Mr. Pike, your term of service is ending. Mr. Pike, your service as a school board member is the shortest of any board member at 14 months, but you spent years as an educator in Henrico. Mrs. Koch, you are an active representative of your district, having served eight years on the school board. Mr. Montgomery, you have served on the Henrico School Board for 12 years, longer than anyone here. I remember that I first met you when you first ran for school board. You have worked with the HEA on many issues over the years, and we appreciate all that you have done. I have a small token of appreciation for each of you leaving the school board. Thank you for your service.
Thank you. And I'll speak for the others and tell you it has been a real pleasure. HEA is a partner in holding us accountable and advocating and supporting, and so it's greatly appreciated. So thank you very much. I do remember we worked on bimonthly pay. There were a number of issues and many more issues left to be worked on, so your work is not done here. Our next speaker is Melinda Winterhalter. Thank you, who will be followed by Nathan Lash, please.
Good evening. I live in the Monumental Floral Gardens neighborhood in the Crestview area. Crestview is a unique and special area. It is one of the most culturally diverse pockets in Henrico County and has always been recognized and celebrated for this. Sometimes cultural diversity also impacts socioeconomic diversity, as many families find it hard to locate work when they have immigrated here but have not yet learned the English language. I know this firsthand as I am an adult ESL teacher. I spoke to the board last month about the socioeconomic statistics based off of free lunch recipients at Crestview. I want to reiterate this information, as it seems some of the redistricting committee members are neglecting to consider poverty statistics when they are making changes to the current draft A and B at Monday's committee meeting. Crestview Elementary is a small school that feeds into Freeman with only 341 students, and 43% of these students are on the free lunch program. The largest elementary school that feeds into Freeman is Tuckahoe Elementary with 644 students, providing just 4.6% free lunches. Freeman has 27.6 students on free lunch program, and Tucker 42.6 students on free lunches. To remove Crestview from Freeman and place Crestview into Tucker, remove socioeconomic and cultural diversity from Freeman and increases Tucker's concentration of poverty. Information also pertaining to the current map drafts are this. Map A removes Pinchback Elementary School from Godwin and places it into Freeman. Map B removes Pinchback and parts of Carver Elementary School from Godwin, place it into Freeman, and then puts Crestview into Tucker. Issues with this are that both Pinchback and Carver provide socioeconomic diversity to Godwin. Pinchback provides 40.4% free lunches, Carver 44.6, and Godwin only provides 14.1 free lunches. Why impact these three areas, Crestview, Pinchback, and Carver, when they are socio-economically beneficial to their currently assigned high schools? I also want to say I was thankful that Mr. Davis from Pupil Transportation spoke at Monday's meeting as he reiterated the fact that the quickest route from my house to Tucker is going down Broad Street to Interstate 64, as this was the bus route example that he gave. The car accident statistics on this stretch of Broad Street are 67 crashes in 2017 and 68 crashes in 2018. The crash statistics on Interstate 64 in this stretch are 110 in 2017 and 65 in 2018. I'm sure our experienced bus drivers can handle this obstacle course. The rush hour traffic ensues on these roads, but this is a huge safety concern for new and inexperienced drivers. I know any redistricting efforts have difficult decisions to be made. There are so many areas of valid concerns, it can be overwhelming deciding which one to prioritize as you want to adhere to the Henrico County guidelines and criteria. I hope you're able to see the validity in the above points, and I encourage you all to attend the redistricting committee meetings to observe the flawed process that takes place there. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. So next speaker is Mr. Lash, and Mr. Lash will be followed by Candace Lucas, please. Ms. Lucas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Dr. Cashwell, school board members, school board members-elect. Thank you for listening and appreciate the platform we're given to express our concerns around this redistricting process. As mentioned, my name is Nathan Lash, a resident of Monumental Floral Gardens, Libby and the Willow Lawn area, and I have two children in Henrico County Schools, a fourth grader at Crestview and an eighth grader at Tuckahoe. Our current pattern is Crestview, Tuckahoe, and Freeman. One of the proposed options have my children moving from Freeman to Tucker High School. The current route for traveling to Freeman currently is Monument Avenue to Three Chopped, a pleasant, safe route for buses and our new drivers. If moved from Freeman, this route would turn my 16-year-old daughter traveling on Broad Street to Interstate 64 during rush hour traffic both to and from school. Our children would not only be crossing Broad Street once, but traveling on that road for several miles through heavily congested intersections and transitioning to an interstate where speeds average well north of 70 miles an hour. This spells disaster, and no parent in my community wants our children on that route. At the present time, myself and my wife are responsible for both my kids' transportations to school. We have to pass Freeman to get to Tuckahoe Middle. For those who don't know, these two schools are located within a few hundred yards of each other. Tucker is miles in the opposite direction, not yards, but miles. This would be another huge inconvenience for parents, and more time in the car for young drivers would also potentially help in transporting of siblings. My children have been also through two school renovations, both Crestview and Tuckahoe Middle, and have been educated in temporary trailers and around construction for years. Now, if moved from Freeman, my daughter would have yet another disruption, having to leave so many friends and teammates behind to start over at a school, which no one can guarantee that she won't be back in a construction zone in trailers again. She would attend Freeman for one year and then move to Tucker for ultimately two freshman years. Has anyone evaluated the numerous impacted students and how these disruptions could negatively impact education and mental health as they prepare for college and the rest of their lives? By altering our current pattern and removing Crestview from Freeman, this will nearly remove all diversity out of Freeman High School. Having a diverse atmosphere helps prepare our children for real life. I feel it's crucial for our children to live and learn with children from all socioeconomic and cultural backgrounds. Not to mention, within less than two miles of my home, there are 10 different denominations of churches and places to worship. Crestview brings diversity that Freeman needs and requires. This impacted diversity level should be looked at carefully, as this would transform Freeman against one of the guiding principles, not only to Henrico County public schools, but as a society in general. We are being targeted again for redistricting like we were years ago. Why disrupt this tight-knit, well-balanced community and put our children in added harm's way? I know no new houses being built. No new neighborhoods are planned in my community. Myself and my neighbors are being unfairly targeted again during this redistricting process because of growth and expansion in the Far West End. Crestview is a crucial part of Freeman, and Freeman needs Crestview. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Ms. Lucas, who will be followed by Tiffany Brown. Ms. Brown will be our next speaker after Ms. Lucas.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Tiffany Brown. I have something I would like for you to... Okay. Good evening, everyone. My name is Tiffany Brown. I'm a parent of a student that used to attend Howland Springs Elementary School. I have something I want you guys to... Each one of you can take one of those. Tonight, I come to voice my concerns about my child's pre-K experience at Henrico County Elementary School, which is Howland Springs Elementary School. Starting on her first day, September 3, 2019, which is technically the first day of school, my child being placed in seclusion or restraints. She's in a pre-K program. She's five years old, and this was her first educational experience. The seclusion and restraints continued unbeknownst to me on many other occasions. I counted 14 from some things that we received. However, as a result of that, I have removed my child from that school, and she calls Howland Springs Elementary School "the school with the jail room in it." She's afraid to go there. She's pretty much afraid of any educational institution at this time, and she's also afraid of our local police officers. If I see if we're in the grocery store, she fear... Well, she will state that, "Oh, Mom, they're gonna take me to jail." She's five years old. On October 21, I had enough of trying to talk to administrators, individuals about her teacher and the things that was taking place in the classroom, and no one would listen to me. I sent an email two days later, and I want to read you this email. I gave each one of you a copy on the 23rd, and this is to give you a little foundation of what I experienced, because this was two days after I took her out. I hadn't officially unenrolled her, but she wasn't there. Okay, so as I wrote, I said, "Hello, everyone," and I addressed this to Ms. Cynthia Brand Parker, Donna Hopkins, and Sonia Tolliver. Those were the three individuals that I sent this to. Those are the three people that I had the most communication with in this process, okay? So I said, "Hello, everyone. As you all know, I've spent the last three-plus weeks in Rakaya's classroom observing. I took off work. I found FMLA for my child's safety, to see what was going on in that classroom, to protect my job and to see what was going on with my daughter," and they all were aware of it. So I spent the last three-plus weeks in the classroom observing what was planned time off to help my child in her educational transition, as also to educate her teacher on her auditory hyperresponsivity to common environmental factors in the school, of which crying is one of Rakaya's major triggers, sometimes resulting in maladaptive behaviors and attempt to flee or avoid them, but not to report its safety concerns, as they were trying to say. So number one, I've witnessed, and I also, this was one of the things that I've witnessed in those three weeks that I was there. I witnessed Ms. Sawyer, that was the teacher that was supposed to educate my child, but she traumatized her. I witnessed Ms. Sawyer deny my child a straw in the cafeteria, resulting in her falling on the floor, and, you know, she's five. She wants a straw to drink her juice, and she walks away from her.
Ms. Brown, thank you. Yes, thank you so much, and thank you for sharing the other material that you previously shared with us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Ms. Lucas, please. And if there's anyone else who wishes to speak, if you'd move down to the front row and be prepared to do so, that'd be great. Thank you.
Good evening, board members. My name, once again, is Candace Lucas. I am a parent of a student that attends Seven Pines Elementary. I'm a parent of a student who graduated from Henrico County Public Schools. I'm a licensed educator and administrator. I'm also an activist, activist that looks to dismantle the school-to-prison pipeline. I wanted to tell you something, Dr. Cashwell. You speak equity. There can be no equity until there is justice. You cannot have equity until you address the issue of injustice, and for some reason, we don't want to address that in this county. John, I, 12 years ago, I helped you get elected, and I've regretted it every day of my life since that time. You have not been responsive to the needs of the individuals and families in Verona. You won't even return a phone call to help our kids. So I'm happy that you're transitioning out, but you've left a mess for Alicia to clean up. So I need you to know that as well. In addition, I want to talk about the issue of this parent coming up. So many times, we want to make the claim that no one is going through the protocol. We have deadbeat staff members who don't want to listen to our families. We have individuals like Mr. Hall, who's over the elementary schools, who covers up child abuse and has done it since he was a principal, of black boys and black girls. I'm not saying what you guys don't already know. He wrote it in an email, and y'all promoted him after he wrote it. Yeah, I covered up the abuse. So let's talk about the fact that we're not keeping our kids safe, and this board has a lot of work to do. The next board that's coming up, I'm excited about it, because hopefully we'll get some people who authentically care about our children and don't just talk the talk, but really do so. Dr. Cashwell, you know I know you from Virginia Beach, and it was a hot mess down there, and it's a hot mess here. No matter how much we put up about how wonderful Henrico is, which it does, it does have some great, great attributes. I wouldn't have my own child in this system. All I can say is that we are not doing right by the least of these, the ones who really, really have no one to speak for them. I looked at this teacher who has allocated a ration, a box of paper a month, or whatever. That is disgraceful when you are paying the Reed Smith Law Firm $1,200 an hour to come after me. $1,200 an hour. You spent $225,000 in federal court to protect your right not to educate a black child. Who needed it? Dr. Cashwell, you must do better. You have two girls. What if someone paid $225,000 to deny your children an education? You'd be livid. So don't get mad, because I'm mad, because if you're not mad about what's going on with our kids, something is wrong with you, not me, if you're not mad. Now, I'm going to close out by stating that, Ms. Koch, you said it right. If you don't leave something better than when you came, then you've done a disservice. And unfortunately, this school board, as it stands, has left Henrico worse than when you came in. Almost 11 years ago today, I appeared first before this school board. I've been to more school board meetings than anybody on the board, and I expect to keep coming to them. I'm going to be your conscience, and I'm going to hold you accountable. Reverend Cooper, this mother came to you for help. You didn't even call her back. What if that was your black child locked in that room? You didn't even call her back. As a black man, you should be ashamed, sir.
Thank you, Mrs. Lucas. Again, your time is up.
Thank you. You didn't tell me the first time.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
You didn't tell me the first time. I'd like to have a comment.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Well, very good. Our next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. Members of the board, you had an opportunity to see the minutes and review them. Is there a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it, the minutes are approved. Madam Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. For the first item I'm bringing forth, I'm seeking your approval for the 2020-2021 school calendar.
Thank you very much. Members of the board, this has been an item of much discussion and presentation by the staff. We've had an opportunity to ask all our questions. Does anyone need anything answered before we take a vote on this? Very good. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented? I beg your pardon, to approve the school calendar as presented by the superintendent?
So moved.
Movement, Mr. Pike, is there a second?
Second.
Second of them. Mrs. Augburn, all those in favor indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? Eyes have it, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your approval of the calendar. Next, we have a number of policy revisions for your consideration for approval. The first one is the approval of proposed revisions to policy P-2-04-002, executive session.
Thank you. Before we vote on this one, I'll just let those who are present know that we've got about a... Not quite a dozen of these, and they've been the subject of being presented to two board meetings. Most of these are administrative in nature in that they're bringing the language in line with existing language and bringing it up to code. So with that being said, we're going to move through these after this rather quickly. Is there a motion to adopt the superintendent's recommendation for approval of policy P-204-002? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Eyes have it, the motion carries.
Thank you. Next, I'm seeking approval for proposed revisions to policy P-2-05-002.
Thank you. Members of the board, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation. Is there a motion to adopt a recommendation for policy P-205-002?
So moved.
It's been moved by Reverend Cooper. Is there a second? Second by Mrs. Cock. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Eyes have it, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Next, seeking approval for revisions to policy P-4-01-001.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt the superintendent's recommendation regarding policy P-4-01-001?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? Eyes have it, the motion carries.
The next policy for which I'm seeking approval are revisions to policy P-4-04-005.
Is there a motion to adopt the revisions of superintendent's recommendation regarding the revisions to policy P-4-04-005?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Thank you. Next, see...
Aye, okay. Any opposed? Eyes have it, the motion carries. Thank you. That's okay.
Thank you. And I... Next, I'm seeking approval for policy P-4-08-001.
Members of the board, is there a motion to adopt superintendent's recommendation for revisions to policy P-4-08-001?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? Eyes have it, the motion carries. Are we going too fast, clerks? Are we okay? We can slow down a little bit. All right, go ahead, madam.
Thanks. Next, seeking your approval for revisions to policy P-4-08-009.
Thank you. Members of the board, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation regarding adoption of policy P-4-08-09, the revisions. Is there a motion to adopt the superintendent's recommendation?
So moved.
Been moved by Reverend Cooper. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Pike. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? Eyes have it, the motion carries.
Next, seeking your approval for revisions to policy P-6-09-013.
Thank you. Members of the board, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation. Is there a motion to adopt the revisions to policy P-6-09-013?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Pike. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Augbrun. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? Eyes have it, revisions adopted.
Thank you. Next, seeking your approval for revisions to policy P-7-04-014.
Thank you. Members of the board, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation for adoption of the revisions to policy P-7-04-014. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Reverend Cooper. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Cock. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? Eyes have it, the motion carries.
Thank you. Next, seeking approval for revisions to policy P-8-02.
Members of the board, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation regarding revisions to policy P-8-02. Is there a motion to adopt that?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Augbrun. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Cock. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The revisions are adopted.
Thank you. Next, seeking approval for a proposed new policy, P-8-02-001, School Board Advisory Committees.
Thank you very much. This is a much-needed policy to address this area. Is there a motion to adopt the superintendent's recommendation for approval of the new policy, P-8-02-01?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Pike. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Reverend Cooper. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? The motion is carried.
Thanks. Also, seeking your approval for a new policy to accompany the last, P-8-02-002, Superintendent Advisory Committees.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion to approve the adoption of the new policy, P-8-02-002?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Augbrun. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Pike. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? Eyes have it, the policy is adopted.
Thank you. And finally, in relation to policies, seeking your approval for a related new policy, P-8-02-003, External Committees.
Thank you very much. Members of the board, is there a motion to approve superintendent's recommendation for new policy, P-8-02-003?
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it, the motion carries.
Thank you. Next, I'm recommending that the board accept the $500 grant award from the Virginia Foundation for Agriculture in the Classroom to Dumbarton Elementary School.
Very good. Thank you. Members of the board, is there a motion to accept the grant from Virginia Foundation for Agriculture in the Classroom?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Cock. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Reverend Cooper. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it, the grant's accepted.
Thank you. Also, seeking your acceptance of the Middle School Teacher Core Grant Award of $25,000 from the Virginia Department of Education.
Members of the board, is there a motion to accept the Middle School Teacher Grant Core Grant Award?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Pike. Is there a second? By Mrs. Augbrun. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it, the motion carries.
Next, I'm seeking your acceptance of $16,551 in year-one funding from Virginia Commonwealth University via the Institute of Educational Sciences Grant Award.
Members of the board, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation regarding the grant funding from Virginia, from VCU, via the Institute of Educational Sciences Grant Award. Is there a motion to accept that grant?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Augbrun. Second by Mrs. Cock. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it, the motion carries.
Next, I'm seeking your acceptance of the STEM Teacher Recruitment and Retention Incentive Program grant funding of $23,000 from the Virginia Department of Education.
Thank you. Members of the board, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation regarding acceptance of the STEM Teacher Recruitment and Retention Incentive Program grant. Is there a motion to adopt the... Or accept the grant?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Pike. Second by Reverend Cooper. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it, the grant is accepted.
Next, seeking your acceptance of federal grant funding for the school division in the amount of $13,487,000, of $487,193.
Okay, this is the final allocation for the 2019-20 year. So, members of the board, is there a motion to accept that federal grant funding as outlined by the superintendent?
So moved.
Moved by Reverend Cooper. Is there a second? Second by Mrs. Augbrun. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it, thank you.
Thank you. Next, I'm seeking your approval to award a contract to Mosley Architects in the amount of $1,359,636 for the architectural and engineering services associated with the design of the new A Center on the Glenn Allen High School property.
Very good. Thank you. Members of the board, this is an exciting project that is nice to be... See to be getting underway. Is there a motion that we award the contract for the design services to Glenn Allen A Center? I think that Mrs. Cock has moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Reverend Cooper. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the drawing begin.
Amen.
The grant... The award passes.
Thank you. Next, seeking your approval for the Fifth Amendment or extension to the lease agreement with Liberty Property Limited Partnership for the surplus warehouse located at 4323 Carolina Avenue.
Thank you. Members of the board, is there a motion to approve the Fifth Amendment to the lease for the Carolina Avenue Warehouse?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Pike. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Reverend Cooper. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it, the motion carries.
Next, I'm requesting that the school board award a contract to Sun Tribe Solar LLC